I would like to wish this to my honor, the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, all. Oh, has the board had time to look over the minutes?
I have.
Which were so nicely delivered yesterday.
Yes. That was nice.
Yep. With that being said, make a motion to accept the minutes.
A motion to accept the minutes is presented from the November 16th meeting.
We have a motion, we have a second.
I'll second it.
Wrestle me. Okay. Fund report. All in favor?
Aye.
I get that on next time. Have we had time to look over the fund reports?
Had.
Anything out of the ordinary?
For the fund report?
I think so.
That being said, do I make a here a motion to accept the fund report?
I'll make a motion to accept the fund report.
Thank you, Sharon. Do I hear a second? All approve?
Aye.
Here he is. Payment of the bills.
This is the I had just to look at.
Yeah. We will take a brief couple minutes and look over this.
Health insurance. Health insurance.
Yep.
That and the Drangle. By the way, did they give you the Drangle for $6,100? Quarter installments.
Is it quarterly? Josh Lane pays for the Drangle, that's quarterly?
It's yearly.
Oh, yearly, okay, that makes sense. I thought it was quarterly.
Expensive, right?
Josh Lane, anything out of the ordinary we should be aware of?
No.
Some trucks and records bumped up too, I see.
Yeah. The one was DOT, I believe, and I ain't quite sure what the other one was, or the same. The service.
Make a motion to pay the bills as presented.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Do I hear a mo- uh, yeah. All agree?
You and me?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, great. Motion passes. Okay, let's kick it off. MS4, Kate.
Their meeting today mainly consisted of discussing the restructuring of MS4 as far as with re- reading. Ariana is not going to be coming back, she wants to stay home. Apparently, there was a meeting that I was not informed about between the SWCD, the City of La Porte and the county with the SWCD, Sloughmore Conservation District, being very interested in, I don't know if I should use the word, taking over or assisting us with this problem and using three current employees to take over, split up the duties of the MS4 coordinator with their other positions within the SWCD. One person would be handling field inspections, another one complaints, and then outreach. And then the City of La Porte would pay for à la carte services, which was not defined. There's another meeting with the county, SWCD, and so forth on the 6th of January, which I will be attending, where SWCD will submit their plan, what they're proposing to do, and the budget. So that's kind of where we are right now. There was some discussion about possibly contracting an outside source to do this, which would be the most expensive option, but I kind of think the SWCD is going to be the way that it's going to go. Other than that, we talked about some of the new rules with the changes from the state. One of the things that we were informed of is that not only, I don't know if it's every year or within the five-year permit time, but we have to have, participate in three community events and a construction outreach event, which they talked about, you know, Valprezzo's MS4, Porter, you know, working with other MS4s to put these things together to keep costs down and so forth. And that's all I have for tonight.
Okay. Board have any questions? Alrighty, ma'am, thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, next up, Mr. Herbach.
I think most of my discussion will be covered in old business, new business, so I can, I can wait till then. I defer my time to the engineer.
Okay, we'll let that go at that one now. Mr. Boyle.
Basically, we prepared the 2022 asset management program for the street paving and the community crossing grants, and submitted it to the state. I believe it's been approved, is that correct?
Yes, it has.
So we're good to go there. Other than that, I really don't have anything. Been pretty quack the last month or so.
That's good. Super. Any thing from our park department? No? Okay. Building inspector not in? Any report from him? Josh Lane? Planning zoning? They have a mat moment? That brings us to our police department.
Good evening, everybody.
Evening, Steve.
Couple of things real quick. One, radar sign has been serviced and retired for the year. It's in storage next door. The motorhome issue has been resolved from a couple months ago. It's been moved back and as he promised, so I'm going to consider that matter closed unless you guys have any more questions about that.
No.
And lastly, is an issue that has been, it's been a topic on social media as well as I know the town hall has had some calls about, is the lack of pickup of the larger items around the town. Several people have contacted me directly via social media to express their concerns that there are items that they're putting out are not being picked up. I don't remember who it was that contacted the town hall. The town hall tried to call and get them to pick it up, and they still hadn't picked some things up. Apparently, I'm not sure if it was Borden or the other company, Lake Shore came out with a truck, parked in front of the house, and left and left the items. So, a couple weeks ago, I had one of the guys go out and make a list of everything around the town that was out there and that was provided to Jenny because nothing's happening. I do see one set of mattresses gone off of Martin, but I believe the magistrate moved it himself, but because the other one is still there. Some of the other furniture's out and about. There's really not a lot we can do to the resident because they pay for the service, so it kind of, you know, puts us in a hard spot. It allows a blind on our community, and I don't know what we can do as a group to persuade them to pick their items up as.
Perhaps we should write a letter for this part of the contract.
Everybody has one large item every Friday, but they have to call it in.
Some of them, they have.
And if they've called it in, which I, you know, then they should call the town hall this week, we'll call it and tell them to go.
The last time we had this discussion, it was, you know, it was confirmed that if they don't call it in, the driver sees the item, they're supposed to call it themselves. But some of these people have been calling it in, and they're still not getting picked up.
Do we still have the dumpster locked up?
I was going to ask you that same question.
The town still have the dumpster?
We do still have the dumpster, but, I mean, that's an option, but who's going to pick it up and haul it here?
Well, a couple people I've messaged back to get ahold of the town hall at a time so they can, if they prefer to bring it down themselves. I don't know if they contacted you or anybody here.
The gate's locked and it's only open when Mr. Department's here.
Exactly. That's what I mentioned, 12 o'clock's going to be the cutoff.
There are times when the street department would leave, that they would leave it open for people, and we would lock it, and we knew they were there. So that's always an option, too. The other problem is not everybody has, you know, the means to haul.
Yep.
You know, there's a couch, there are three couches I can think of, or two mattresses, you know, and this is all in different locations. And some people just don't have the means to do that.
Exactly.
So I.
Well, if you have a list, please forward it to me so that I can contact Lake Shore as well, because usually when we do speak with Lake Shore and ladies down there, they're usually willing to help. It's just that either the client, the resident didn't call it in, or if they did, it was missed.
Yeah, these residents, I've had this one over here on Martin, there's one right down the street from you, right on the curve.
Yeah.
And they said they have been calling, so I don't, I don't know what the.
I'm not aware of that address, but.
Another address, 19.
If you get the copy of the list, then.
1900 Block of Wellmets also. There's small menus out there.
Who do they call? They're supposed to call the town hall, or did they?
The number on the can.
Oh, okay.
Well, the town hall is there to assist, obviously, as in their immediate.
Yeah.
Is there a, is there an email address that you could email that company? You know, the problem with the, with the call-in is it's he said, she said, you know, where, but if you could send an email, then you have proof of what day, what time you sent the email to the company, where they can't say, well, we never got your call. So is that, is that an option to send them an email?
There's only two ladies that work at that extension that handle our contracts solely, and our office knows them very well. So I need an address in order to.
Yeah, what I'd advise is, Steve, is to have the people call the town hall.
It's like I said, some of them have called the town hall, and not that they haven't done anything, because they have also called Borden, and I mentioned Rhea specifically, they've talked to Rhea, and Rhea's talked to Borden, and they still haven't picked the items up.
Sometimes we have to double-stay on top of them.
Yeah. Josh Lane, then, yeah, if there's no follow-up from them, you know, let me know.
Yeah.
When is our contract up with them?
Two more years.
Two years, two years, yeah.
You mean your trash picked up at 8 o'clock at night on a Friday? Yeah.
Unless they violate the contract.
Yeah. And it has been tough to keep them on track, but usually, because there's a lot of turnaround jobs across the industry, you know, there's a lot, they're training new people all the time, but.
But our residents, you know, they, they still get frustrated.
Exactly.
Sure.
Rightfully so.
And they are under contractual, contractual obligations, so.
Yeah.
They absolutely are, and so if I had a list or a copy, then I can help residents.
Anything else, Steve?
Nope, that's all I've got.
Thank you.
Guys, anything for me?
Marshall?
Thank you.
No, sir.
Appreciate your time, but I always appreciate your support.
Thank you. Anything from our street department?
Hello.
Hello.
Hello. New face to some. Let me introduce myself, Joe Service. I was kind of selected, kind of, to possibly take over for Steve, or for Steve, yeah, I'm going to take over for this guy, Chris.
Okay.
I'm Chris. Yeah, no, we don't bother with you guys. Anyhow, I was actually kind of pushed, or not pushed, but groomed to take over for Chris. Few things that have gone on recently, as everybody knows, leaf season's done, over with. We did push it out till the 10th of December. The leaf machine is gone currently, did some warranty work done to it. Several things that had come up during the season, so figured it's under warranty, we just got it not even a year ago. Left the company take care of some of the stuff that needs to be done, for sure. Truck's already set up, but pretty snow if it ever gets here. Obviously, it doesn't look like White Christmas this year. Besides that, just trying to mitigate a few other odds and ends projects around the buildings and stuff. Josh Lane and I have been in touch, just trying to get some stuff done around here. We have several things over in the maintenance building we're getting patched up right now. And if you guys, we did potholes this week, got back out, did some more sticks and limbs, just to try and get stuff cleared off the streets for the winter time, so. Any questions for you guys?
Do we have a, like, big increase of downed branches from that, that windstorm?
Honestly, no. We did not see much of anything, and seriously, over this whole summer, since I started, this whole summer, Chris and Rob have both looked at me and said they could not believe, normally there would have been like five, six, seven times they've been called in for major limbs, and what, was it two times?
Once, twice.
That we got called in. It really has not been that bad, so, but no, this last windstorm, I was expecting to be here and.
Yeah, surprising, good.
Not a peep, not a peep, right.
Very good.
I like, I like the not a peep, that's a good thing, so, but yeah, it's been going well.
Okay. One thing I would like to see, our backup generator. I believe that's two years old, new, if I'm not mistaken?
Oh, it was before.
Yeah, it was here before.
They said you're alive.
Okay. Uh, I don't know if this has been done in the past, I'd like to see a monthly run check of that.
I am on that.
Documentated also, go ahead, Steve.
It runs every Monday at 7:00.
It kicks off by itself?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
You do hear, I done heard that one.
Yeah, me too.
I'm sorry, you started saying backup generator, I was going to the port, the mobile one.
That's the mobile one, no.
No, but yes, I, I know when I come in, I have heard it running every Monday.
If possible, I would like to see a log on that monthly, if it had, I don't even know if it has hour meter on it, if by chance, give it a quick look over, yes, Steve?
I don't know if he's aware, but there is a, a notification that was sent, and I don't know if you have that information.
No, I did not receive, I did not receive anything like that.
There's a notification that said that it's, that's kicked in, and I don't know about the log, but that was.
That's a good log, okay.
So then my next question is, I know you want to see maintenance done on it, how often does someone come out, change the oil filter?
Okay, I can tell you now, I'm going to jump over fire department, Michigan State Fire Department, we got five standby generators. Once a year, the company comes out and they take care of them, and, but those are like shipped, are Ford V8s that, those generate for our stations, but except for our administration station has one comparable to this size, but it is, it's an annual maintenance that is done.
I don't know if we have that within the town after that was purchased, I have no clue.
Right.
For maintenance, I don't know if we got to pick it up, or.
We will look at it, and we'll get, I'll get some information going on there.
Great.
Yeah, because I guarantee you, I don't think there's annual maintenance going on on that.
No, I can't remember, well, Steve thinks maybe possibly four years?
It's whenever we did our buildings, when they, it's right around the time they did that.
Okay, so it's possible.
I couldn't even tell you what type we have in.
I can't recall if anybody's ever been out there, but I had, I really didn't pay attention, to be honest with you.
Well, you would know, because you would be the one who would write the, the check for whoever comes out and would inspect it.
Well, while we had Chris here, I know he did a lot of work that he did as part of just labor hours, you know, so.
So I guess we could ask him when was the last time, maybe if he, he's even looked at it.
Not an issue. Not an issue. I'll read that one.
If you can, yeah.
What about the portable generator?
I was going to jump on that one also.
Portable generator was moved out of here a couple months back, I believe. We went to start it and did not start. Got a new battery, and now we are going to start a monthly log on that, and for sure in the spring, I'm going to start doing, making sure we get monthly maintenance or annual maintenance logs on the equipment over the board. I did, man, Pete Zerick knows, I did six and a half years at B&amp;E, I maintained all the equipment there, from those hoists that put the boats in, to the tractors and trailers. So I have a pretty good extensive background in doing that stuff, but I like seeing that things are being taken care of.
Good.
So, just to try to get it on top of some of those issues, I know the Bobcat wasn't maintained for like three years, so we did that this year. I know the loader was done, all the mowers, all that was done, for sure, but, you know, we just noticed a few odds and then things like that that jumped on this summer, a little while after I started.
Great. Super.
Any other questions?
Think we're good. Thank you.
Welcome to the generator, just to throw this out there, yes, it does work and it has it supposed to, because we have lost power.
Oh, yeah, and I hear it when it comes on.
So it's a godsend.
Full mask around there, so you really.
Last place.
It may not be, nah. Okay. Josh Lane, it says jump back to NERC.
I know, they need quarterly.
Okay. Let's jump to old business, 1929 East Cool Springs.
Everybody kind of knows the situation, I think, with 1929. Josh Lane's been on top of it. We had, unfortunately, the company that did the, gave us the $3,000 estimate, apparently didn't go to the property and check on it before they went there. And when they went there, they said, well, wait a minute, it's going to be $8,000, because we looked at the backyard now. So they were all there that day, and I said, you know, I haven't informed the trustee, it's $8,000. They agreed to $3,000, but I don't, I feel uncomfortable just saying do it. So we sent them all home, and I thought it was a really poor policy to make your estimate when you get there.
Yeah.
Do the work. Anyhow, I have talked to the trustee who called me, thanked this for the letter, thanked this for our concern for the people, they're in a special needs trust. What a special needs trust is, someone has left them money, it's monitored by a trustee downstate, and they obviously have either emotional, psychological, physical problems, they can't manage their own monies. So this trustee manages the monies for them, but he doesn't take care of the people, and I told him this problem is going to continue as long as Claudia is there, because she's a hoarder, and she admits to being a hoarder. So, you know, they're going to try to have a meeting with Michael Howard, who's actually the trust is set up for, and Claudia. I sent them the new invoice for $8,000. The trustee said he would review it, I expect them to pay that, I don't see a problem with that. They seem to think they, they would do that. So they've already sent us a check for the fine that the court awarded, $2,500, and the refuse delinquent bill, which was, I think, $495. We've already received that check. So they're going to go in and clean up on the 28th, 29th, is that right, Josh Lane? And they're going to clean up also the backyard and get the property entirely clean, so, again, it's, it's an issue that, you know, they'll deplete their trust money if they continue this.
Right.
I think the trustee's got the message.
Two things, one, that amount, that $8,000 does not include any overtime for us.
No, it does not, and I told them there would be overtime for you guys, now, I'm not sure you have to be there the entire time, there may be, you know, my thought is that you monitor that.
He's, he's, he can be volatile.
Okay, if, you know, if you don't, obviously have to be there for two days, don't, you know.
Sure.
Cut it short, but otherwise, I want to be fair to them.
No, absolutely, absolutely.
At the same time. Okay. That's 1929.
Great. Oh, nothing else under old business? Let us move on to new business. Establish redevelopment commission.
Okay, last meeting we had, the council indicated they wanted to go ahead with the redevelopment commission. I compared it ordinance, there are state requirements when we do the redevelopment commission, for example, for a town, the board has to be made up of five people. The executive of the town, who's your president, appoints three, the legislative board appoints two. The first group serves for a period of two years. After that, they serve from year to year. There's also a non-voting member from the school district appointed to the board by the executive. This is a person that's on that school board that services the town, either partly or fully, and I think the reason, they're not voting, and I think the reason they have is if you're planning on an influx of a lot of kids in the town, the school has to make preparations for possibility of bigger schools or whatever. But there's, again, that's appointed by the executive, so that's all set out in the ordinance. There is, the ordinance also provides that an emergency exists, which we have to vote on. The emergency, the reason that's in there is so we can pass it with one reading tonight, and the emergency would be that we have a developer who is willing to go forward and develop the property. That's unusual. Usually, the redevelopment commission has to find somebody to go in and do it, so the developer wants to start development as soon as possible, he has to get it plotted, I think there's a preliminary plot done, and he has to get the final plot approval, and then move forward with starting development, he wants to do all that in the spring, so that's the emergency. As soon as we form the redevelopment commission, what happens after that is, there are resolutions as to what will be considered in the redevelopment area, the entire town or the TIF district, and then what will be the allotted area that you get tax money and basically put it in the TIF district. So those are all done by resolution afterwards, but we have to first form the redevelopment commission, so that's what this ordinance does, and after this is formed, then I assume that the president can make her appointments, the council can make their appointments, we can move forward. Any questions? Okay. I talked to Tony Rodriguez, he's very excited about the prospect of us possibly having actually houses, not apartments, you know, for people, because it's definitely a need. I talked to Matt Reardon, who said he was going to preliminarily already start looking at areas that, that we, we can deal with. He has already talked to the developer, Mr. Woodruff, Bruce Woodruff, who agreed to a 50/50 split on the bond money, so that's a big development, and I haven't heard anything about the other one, Andy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wardenburg.
Yeah. I haven't heard anything about that, but they're moving forward with the understanding that, you know, we're going to move forward.
This is going to happen, right?
Yeah. So we will need, number one, a motion to have this declared an emergency, to pass this ordinance, and secondly, a motion on the ordinance.
So I'll make the motion to declare this as an emergency, to have the ordinance read and passed.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? So be it.
And a motion on the ordinance, to pass the ordinance. The ordinance being establishing the town of Trail Creek, Indiana redevelopment commission.
So I'll make the motion to establish the redevelopment commission for Trail Creek, Indiana?
Pursuant to ordinance, yeah.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Done deal.
No opposed.
That's all I have.
Okay. Mr. Herbach, thank you very much.
Okay.
Next on the agenda, Marshall and deputy vacation payout approval.
Just need a motion for that.
We just need a motion for that, well, for the marshal, was discussed at a meeting.
Right.
For Marshall Dick to get his. For Marshall Dick to get his, excuse me for not knowing this, his time, what was it, vacation?
Fifteen days.
Fifteen days, non-use vacation, and we are to discuss the amount.
I thought it was fifteen and a half days at...
Just fifteen straight.
Just fifteen straight, okay.
Fifteen straight, 12.25 hours.
That's right.
At 30, 30 an hour.
Right.
And what about the deputy?
It'd be four days at, uh, 12.25. This is...
And that's everything that we talked about at the other meeting?
Yes.
Well, we didn't have Nick's request.
We didn't have that, yeah, right. Which I forwarded that out to Jenny.
I seen it, Jenny got it, she forwarded to you?
No, I don't have it.
I've got it from Sergeant Corpano. It isn't writing what he requested. She did CC to you too, Josh Lane.
Okay.
Do we wanna do it one at a time, with the head marshal, then Sergeant Corpano?
Yes.
Okay, do I hear a motion for head marshal Dick to receive fifteen, payment for 15 days for nonusable vacation days?
I move to pay Marshal Steve Dick, uh, for his 15 days of vacation days.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Kyle, you seconded it?
Kyle seconded. No nays? Accepted then. I don't wanna jump ahead of her. Next, we'll need a motion for Sergeant Corpano's days for vacation days.
I make, uh...
Go ahead.
I make the motion to, uh, pay Sergeant Corpano for four days, uh, so that days.
Do I hear a second?
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Motion carries. Give that sergeant a no.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number one, the marshal. Josh Lane, if I'm not mistaken, do we, I totally...
Make a motion?
Make a motion, yeah, for each person.
That's it.
I need a motion for the town marshal of Town of Trail Creek.
Any nominations?
I move to retain Steve Dick as town marshal of Trail Creek for 2022.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? So carries. Congratulations again, Steve.
Thank you.
That's if you're willing to...
That's if you're willing to take it, that's right.
Now.
Street commissioner, if, uh...
Go ahead.
If Mr. Zerbis is throwing his head into the ring for this position, I move to, uh, hire Joe Zerbis as the street commissioner of Trail Creek for 2022.
And I will second that.
You had the motion and the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? So be it.
Welcome aboard, Mr. Zerbis.
Thank you.
Is that Z-E-R-B-I-S?
B-E-S.
B-E-S.
Yes, thank you.
Item three, attorneys, request from Braji Nelson and James, LLP, and Hodges and Davis, counsel to review and appoint. Has the board had time to look over the articles sent from both establishments?
So I'm assuming Chris Willoughby would be the actual attorney for the town?
I'm assuming that, yes.
If for Nelson...
Yes.
Braji Nelson and James.
Correct.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, attorney Chris, Chris Willoughby as attorney for the town of Trail Creek for the year 2022.
I'll second that.
Second?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? So carries. Thank you. Item four, engineer, I ain't jumping ahead too fast for you.
I'm recording it.
Engineer, have we had any indication, oh, jeez, sorry, I'm losing it today, early morning, Hassan Associates Consulting Engineers, has the board looked over their packet?
Yes.
We satisfied what we seen? Need a motion to accept Hassan Associates?
I move to hire Hassan Associates as the, uh, town engineer for the Town of Trail Creek for 2022.
Second?
I will second that.
Okay, do I hear, uh, an appro, I'm sorry, approval? Yay or hay? Yays?
Aye.
I'm losing it. Any opposed? So be it. Congratulations to Hassan Associates.
Welcome aboard. Welcome aboard, Mr. Hassan.
My apologies to everybody, I'm long day. Item five, building inspector, Steve Thomas, was advised, he indicated with the yes. Electrical inspector, number six, Dave Switzer, question mark on that one, has anybody reached out and no reply back?
No, we've reached out, and Dave Switzer would like to be retained.
Okay.
Yes. And there actually is a new agenda that went out just after the packets went out, so number five is actually the MS four.
Oh, sorry, I had that.
Yeah.
I didn't bring up, I brought up the wrong one.
I just wanted to make...
It's not the first time I've forgotten.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Too many people, too much paper.
Yeah, it sounds like your...
Just read them all and...
I'm a former attorney.
Okay, so to retain the following, MS four coordinator, Katie Doyle.
Yes.
She approves, great. Building inspector, Mr. Steve Thomas, voted yes. Electrical inspector, Dave Switzer, Switzer, my apologies, indicated yes. Plumbing inspector, Paul Foreman, was a yes. HVAC Janet Cole from La Porte County, also advised yes.
So I make a motion to retain the MS four coordinator, coordinator Kate Doyle, uh, building inspector Steve Thomas, electrical inspector Dave Switzer, plumbing inspector Paul Foreman, and HVAC Janet Cole from La Porte County, uh, for the year 2022.
I will second all those appointments.
You didn't mention Kate, right?
I did, yes, she was the first one!
He did!
Rattled it off kinda quick, y'all. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So be it, motion carries. Congratulations, everybody. We move on to public comment. Anybody from the massive crowd have public comment?
No.
All right. Clerk's, clerk's comment. Anything, Josh Lane?
No.
Super. Counsel comment.
I would like to thank Mr. Doyle and Mr. Herbach for their many years, I don't even know how long it's been, but I know you, you both have been...
Oh, yeah.
Faithful service to the Town of Trail Creek for many, many years, decades, I'm sure, so I wanna thank you both for your service, and it really, it pains me to see both of you go.
Appreciate it, man.
Thank you.
And I would like to present you with, the plaque that says, "An appreciation of 30 years of dedication, dedicated service to the town," and "Appreciation of 58 years."
Fifty-eight, huh?
Wow, boy.
Oh, so, thank you.
And I'm sure it will be a seamless thing. I would say speech, but we've already heard enough from the board, so I figure I wanna get that jab in before...
Let me say one thing.
For sure.
What, what's kept me, um, as the attorney for the town, is the people and the boards. Uh, what I've always found is the boards have really ruled in favor of the town. Politics has never played a part, I've never seen that as part of it, and I think that's what, what keeps us going as a town, that kind of attitude, so you, you should commend yourself, you know, for, uh, really your dedication to the town too, and, and the other employees that we have. Uh, the second reason that I stayed on is to keep John out of trouble. Which is been a full-time job.
Pete beat me to it, but thank you, gentlemen, both of you, for your years of dedicated service.
Thank you.
Yes.
It was an honor and a privilege to be on this board, working with the both of you...
Yes.
In my tenure at this time.
Thank you.
Well, I think I concur with my attorney here, it's been a pleasure working with all the boards, uh, there's both Democrats and Republicans come, stand outside that door, but when they come in here, they, they lose that, and they've always worked for the good of the town, and it's been a pleasure working with them, uh, been a great deal of improvement in the 50, what is it, eight years?
Wow.
There were very few paved streets in town at the time, uh, virtually no storm sewer system, um, come a long way.
There's been, there's been a lot of improvements, for sure.
Oh, yeah.
There has been. Okay. Adjournment, do I hear a motion to adjourn for time?
Move to adjourn.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Second. First, second. And to all, have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Merry Christmas, everybody. Merry Christmas.